Heavy attention please, welcome to the Zone of Board of January 8th, 2019. My name is Marty Higgins and Chairman, to my left Vice Chair Mr. Cavais. Board members, Mr. O'Briens, Chair Mr. Radell, Mr. Himmel. Behind me, the head of Inspection Services, Commissioner Duca. To my right, to your left, Hot Cork, Mr. Murphy. If you have a cellphone or a pager, would you please put on vibrate or silent? Not to interrupt the meeting, if anyone wants to talk, please step outside. We have no microphones here and it's hard to hear. If anyone's gonna testify tonight, could you please stand up? Anyone gonna testify? If you think you might testify tonight. If you think you might testify. Mr. Craig?
Do you swear to the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, I hope you die?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that way to read in a minute, not for several minutes.
Love it. On the motion, standing on our favor. Close and move. They have a six-month extension here, they'd like to... The property was sold and they're having troubles getting this contract. Is there a case number? Have a motion please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in case number Z-17-97, Lee Jun Chen of Spring Street Quincy. I'd like to motion to extend our...
Six months?
Yeah, six months.
For the motion, standing on our favor. Close and move. First, old business, case number Z-1864. In Hugh Jane, for a finding to construct a rear addition on the premise number 161 Wilson F. We have a letter here to continue this until February 26.
Mr. Chairman, in matter number Z-18-64, Jilu Jane, for a finding to construct a rear addition on the premise number 161 Wilson Avenue, make a motion to continue the hearing until February 26.
Second. On the motion, standing on our favor. Close and move. On old business, case number Z-1873, William Phelan for variance, the demolition existing non-conforming structure, non-conforming garage, construct a 14-year construction upon 149-151 Yiddo Street, Council.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. William Phelan. I don't have my architect here today after our less than positive reception at the last meeting from some of the business owners surrounding the area. We kind of went back to the drawing board a little bit and were attempting to scale down the project. We have the beginnings of some drawings that would meet all the setbacks, all the floor area ratio, all the dimensional requirements of the industrial zone that the property lies in. It would reduce the number of units by two, from 14 down to 12. What I was hoping to do tonight is to ask the board's consideration for just a little bit more time. I can show you some of the preliminary drawings that Brian Donahue...
No, that's okay, Council, you don't have to. We just need a date for me if we could. What's gonna take you?
I would say just a month. We're just about done with the drawings, so I think within a month or so we can come back, if that's all right?
You can do February 12th or February 26?
February 12th is fine.
February 12th.
Mr. Chairman, matter Z-18-73, William Phelan, for a variance, the demolition existing non-conforming structure, a non-conforming garage, construct a, maybe 12 unit, but let's say 14 for now, structure on the premise number 149-151 Yiddo Street, I'd make a motion to continue the hearing until February 12.
Just so it's clear, we won't be requesting any type of variance at this point in time. We'll only require a...
Yeah, but just...
But you don't have a new set of drawings for us a week ahead of time?
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. All in favor?
Aye.
Close and move. Thank you, Council. Hey, have a good night. Further under, under new business. Yeah, Bellevue F.
Road.
Road. Here's what happened. Every time we mail out a case, it's for the person in the house. The owner never got notified because he's not on the abutter's list. We take the abutter's list and we mail it all out. So, since it's your case in his home, he didn't even get notified. So today we realized what happened, phone calls were made, Parkers lawyer, and we're gonna continue this February 26. So he gets notified. He needs his attorney. Okay? So, under our case number Z-1879...
Yes.
...that will move him to February 26.
Z-18-79, Terry Bushville for appeal to request a re-inspector of the property with short compliance with zone 149-300 Bellevue Road, I'd make a motion to continue the hearing until February 26.
Second. On the chairman?
Aye.
Close and move. Under new business, case number Z-1877, Bank of Canton, a variance, find and replace a modified changeable electronic sign band for the existing pylon sign on the premise number 54-56 McGrath Highway. Councilor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rob Fleming, Fleming and Fleming, I represent the Bank of Canton concerning its application for this for this evening. We were here in 2012, I think Chairman Higgins, Mr. Cavais, and Mr. O'Brien were here as well for that particular hearing. This was, so this is the property located at 54 Miami McGrath Highway. The Bank of Canton, I believe, purchased the property back in 2011, 2012. There's an existing pylon sign with Bank of Canton on there. Right below it is a two-foot by six-foot digital sign. It's been there since the 80s. As far as I know, it was pruned in the 80s. Always had the capability of flashing and scrolling and things of that nature. I think a prior owner, prior user of the property, had probably used it for those reasons as well. In 2012, we were here because Mr. Duca just wanted some clarification on that signage and its continued use, which obviously my client was willing to continue that. So again, 2012, we had just requested, just to find it, I kind of have in concrete that it was gonna be allowed for its permitted use. Back in 2012, this board had put a couple of conditions, one being that it would be static. No flashing, no scrolling letters either or words. And Bank of Canton was fine with that. And that's what they've used it for since 2012. The frequency of change was minimally of once every 24-hour period. My understanding, I have two representative, one representative from Bank of Canton this evening, is Stephen Young. He's director of marketing for the bank. Also, Jeff Sauer's here from the sign company. What's happened since is this sign is defunct and no longer operational. So an option certainly is to replace it with the single red dot matrix sign, you know, which is capable of only so much. You know, another option is to improve it, same dimensions, two feet by six feet, same dimensions as the existing, with variation of colors, more colors. This allows them to do a little bit more on, you know, slight advertising, you know, it allows them a little more characters, you know, as well, you know? But essentially, it's more color variation than a single red dot major sign. The same conditions will apply and the bank is fine with that because they don't change the sign that frequently. Every few days, maybe a couple times a week, you know? But it would not be moving, it would not be scrolling, it would just stay static while the particular advertisement is up there.
It's the exact same size electronic billboard, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Which, I don't know what that is, it's two feet high, two by six feet?
Two, it's two feet by six feet, correct, yep.
Now, when they put up the flag like that, they're not gonna have that weight now. They already got a flag up.
There's a flag.
No, but sometimes people put flags on those and they wave.
Or they wave. No, again, that wouldn't be static, it's, nothing will be moving on this particular sign.
Thank you, any questions?
This is the hunk of a sign, I believe, I said, to hold back, hold back then?
I was reading your comments and...
It's what you said.
Yeah. Yeah.
I remember.
This one sticks out to me, it's mine, Councilor.
Yeah, right.
So long as the conditions remain...
Thank you, Councilor. Is there anyone like to speak in favor? In favor? First call, second call?
I'm gonna speak in favor.
Can you put the camera on you? I want to see...
It's on me, actually. I can get both me and you questioning me at the same time right now.
Oh, is it new video?
So, but I'm for this. I mean, I've seen this sign issue come up many, many different times now and it seems like we need to update our sign zoning because businesses deserve to have signs. They pay a lot of money, they pay a lot of rent, and commercial taxes are twice as much as residential taxes, so you have to allow commercial people to come to this and advertise. I mean, to say they can't have a sign that meets today's technology means we're kind of a city that is in the past. We should be a city that's in the future and we should allow businesses to have signs. I'm not really sure why we ban signs like we do, but...
Well, because you get change in signs, John, and they flash and they change every 10 seconds or three seconds and people drive and look at them, correct?
Well, I was sitting here thinking here, as you're coming up from Roxy's, we're planning on building that giant apartment building right there in the corner. It's gonna be hard to even see the sign until you go by that big apartment building that they're gonna build. So therefore, they're gonna need some sort of function to let the people know that...
They got washboard, you see, after the fresh water on your windshield, so you wipe and pull on, you look.
But the bottom line is that, like I said, they're a bank, Bank of Canton, that's a real business. They deserve, really, I think, any sign that they wanna put there. So, it sounds like they're really not asking for anything right now, so I definitely approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Is there anyone else like to speak in favor? Second call, third call, call-up party hearing calls. Joe Carr responds. Is there anyone opposed to run the side? First call, second call, third call, close. You're gonna keep the same thing, I'd be in favor.
Yeah, I'd be in favor.
Likewise.
You have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, matter number Z-18-77, Bank of Canton, for a variance, find and replace a modified changeable electronic sign band on existing pylon sign on the premise number 54-56 McGrath Highway. Make a motion to grant the variance.
On the motion, standing on our favor. Close and move.
So you just wanted more colors, was that?
I want more colors.
Under new business, case number Z-1878, Michael Wood for variance, convert the existing two-family home into a four-family home on premise number 30 Elwood Park.
Mr. Chairman, board members, Mrs. Murphy. For the record, Steve DeRoches, a White River Valley survey, our offices are at 95 White Street here in the city of Quincy. I'm here this evening, my client, Mr. Michael Wood, who purchased his property at 30 Elwood Park, and his intent is, the current house is two-level. The first level up above has two units, two bedroom units each. The lower level is unfinished, but it has the outline for two units in the basement.
How many bedrooms?
Even though this is a residential A district, in which I don't believe it should be, because I like to pass out, hand out to each...
Yeah, we've all been there.
Yeah. On the very back, first off, I have three letters of support from the neighborhood. And the last page is a map showing what the current makeup of that neighborhood is. You'll see his property is basically all surrounded by multi-unit buildings.
Right, which happened years ago and they just keep... On the bottom floor, what is that? What are you having on the bottom floor?
Basically, the outline of two units there, I believe...
I know, two units, two bedrooms?
No, one's a two-bedroom, one's a one-bedroom. And I believe we've provided enough parking on the outside for common construction.
Six floors, did they use the garage?
I don't believe so, no.
Say then, four floors, where's your six? Two in the third row?
Yeah, they have.
How the garage gets six?
Yeah, I'm sorry, there'll be two units, I don't think it can be there, all of the garages.
Yeah.
There'll be two outside, ten, two. And then beside them, we're planning to put in two more units between the property and the garage.
What are you doing with the bush out front and all that? You ripping that out?
Out front?
Yeah, you got a bush, you get a car park on the gravel, right? You go in there, you get a car park on the gravel?
Okay.
I don't know, I'm asking.
I'm telling you, let me ask my client, he's doing... He'd probably answer these questions better than I can.
Name and address for the record, please.
Michael Wood, 72 Glendale Road, foots and passages.
Mr. Wood, you get two in your garage, two behind him, right?
Okay.
I get two in there, two behind him, and two behind that, six. You get parking on the left. There's six there, how do you get the car?
The bushes are gone.
Oh, that's what I asked. The bushes are gone, and what are you doing? Putting your crush on it?
Crushed on.
Thank you.
We also have an option...
No, that was my question, I'm not supposed to... Any questions?
What do you have to say?
No, he's got another option. There's no room back there.
We don't want to hear that option.
I'm sorry?
We don't want to hear that option.
Well, we have a stripple inside the house on the right inside, 40 feet away, to accommodate a couple, could be another four cars, but we'd rather keep that as open space, you know, for...
It would look horrible. It would just, when you turn that corner, it would look crazy, right? It just wouldn't look right at all.
So the multi-family, did you put them in?
I'm thinking...
I have no other questions.
Yeah, so long as the parking is resolved, that was gonna be a concern, though. Suck the fella. I'm going to...
Does there anyone wanna speak in favor? First call, second call, third call. Correspondence? Is there anyone opposed to run the side? I have a letter here.
I am. John Raffel, 62 Grandwall Road. This is residential A. So when I was reading this one today, first thing I did is I went to Google Maps and I looked at the aerial picture. And in front of this house, there were a couple cars parked on the street. You can look at the Google Map picture yourself and look at the aerial thing and you'll see there are cars already parking on the street. So, it's rez A, and I believe in protecting the people who move to rez A. They was non-conforming, they already had a privilege, but I have a two-family non-conforming in rez A. So to ask, can I make a two-family a four-family, to me, that's what I'm saying, can I make my single family into a two-family in residential A? I don't think you can add more dwelling units in residential A. I think you're allowed to have something if it's non-conforming, but you're not allowed to add more dwelling units. So, I'm just a little bit confused why the applicant would even ask to add more units in residential A. So, for that reason, you know, I'm against this and I would be shocked to see why you guys would allow a four-family to be put into a residential A area. So for those reasons, I'm against this proposal.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed to run the side? Second call. I have a letter here. January 8th, it was written today, John Raffel, a matter, maybe sponsored a notice to the public here, and please be advised that because, because of my age, I think, current health, I am unable to attend, therefore I submit this letter in my stead. The residence in question has long been viewed as the nicest house on the street. Anything that alters this perception could negatively impact the value of my house. Changing a twoplex into a fourplex, four-unit house will increase traffic and noise. I read that the interest in the letter I sent, petitioner Mike Wood, and I would very much like to take him at his word that he would take care to be a good landlord and maintain the property at 30 Elwood Park. The property be surveyed to determine the accurate property boundaries between Mike Wood's property and mine located at 40 Elwood Park. So that's the one next door, where you're putting those, the gravel?
Yeah.
Not that?
At the other side of the house.
The backside?
Looking at the house, the concrete is on the back, that neighbor broke your lawsuit for. This would be the neighborhood of the house on the right side.
Around the corner?
Where Steve said that you could put...
Okay. I cannot say that I am in favor of this petition, if I say a hope that if your boys grant severance, Mike would become the good landlord he portrays to be, not just an absentee landlord, Read it, F.
Rosenfield.
Rosenfield. 40 Elwood Park. Anyone else? Call-up party hearing calls. I have to go back and open up people in favor. He gave three letters, I just wanna read their names. Gregory Ringland, Cole Carroll, 711 Elwood Park, 16 Elwood Park, 11 Elwood Park, Denise Murphy. I guess his closest, in favor. Call-up party hearing calls. Comments?
Well, I just, you know, what Mr. DeRoches gave us today, looking at, and your opinion I have in the neighborhood, it's one of those things, you first say, I don't want anything to do with this, but when you look at every one of these places, that whole neighborhood is a multi-family. Everybody's a multi-family, so again, somebody gave everyone else here permission to do this, I don't see how we can do the same.
My idea would, without constructing, having to go up or out or to the side, if they can resolve the parking issues. What I'm saying is if the units are already, you know, a footprint is there for the units, then I think it's reasonable to allow it. Again, I don't see any hindrance or traffic when you got 34 units, we had, yeah, with three or four classrooms a day, it ain't gonna make any difference down there.
I think, yeah, what he's proposing is consistent with the neighborhood, it's not gonna make a significant difference in terms of traffic department. It's gonna end up talking about off-street, it looks like, as long as that's resolved.
We always say, the maps are kinda drawn kinda funny, this looks like it should've been like a spot zone, it shouldn't have been a rez A.
Yeah, it could've been a rez A.
Yeah, I mean, I have no idea. I mean, you look around at it, there's no reason for it to be, so I'm in favor.
Have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, matter number Z-18-78, Michael Wood, for variance, convert the existing two-family home into a four-family home on premise number 30 Elwood Park. Make a motion to grant the variance.
Second. On the motion, standing on our favor.
Aye.
Close. Aye.
Thank you very much, Board.
Thank you, thank you.
Steve?
I need that out, too. Get it both, get it both.
I would start bringing...
It's disappointing.
No.
I'm getting a little tired, this is...
Further under tonight's visits, case number Z-1880, Michael Harris, windows blown, windows for variance. Wait a minute. You get a council, I wanna try to...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
They got cameras tuned out, John?
Case number Z-1880, Michael Harris, windows blown, for variance, to put up a shed in the rear, setback in the premise number 55 George Road. The applicant represented a...
Yes, hi, my name is Michael Harris. Thank you, Board Chairman, for considering this. I'm here to look for a variance, put up a shed in back of my house. If you're familiar with George Road, there's a small backyard. The shed is up, and I apologize, I made a mistake, I let my shed person tell me that it was three-foot by three-foot variance that I needed from my property line, and obviously I found out afterwards that it's six-foot by six-foot from the property line, three-foot by three-foot is the old variance. My shed is three-foot by two-foot right now, my guy didn't even put a three-foot by three-foot up, three-foot by two-foot. So I'm asking for a variance to accept, to be allowed to go three-foot by three-foot, the old variance.
Are you gonna slide that back?
I will move it whichever you tell me to, yeah. The reason I put a shed up in the backyard is because planning on putting, picking down my garage and putting up a bedroom and bathroom in the area on my house. We've already gone through the wetlands and all that stuff, 'cause I'm on a flood plain and already got that approved. So, my garage, as you know, in that area is tiny, can't put cars in there, so it's basically a big shed. So I put my big shed in my backyard. So, what I'm asking for is a variance to be able to put that shed three-foot by three-foot from the corner of my back lawn.
How big's the shed? Eight by 10?
Yeah, it's an eight by 10, yeah.
I have no questions. I have none either.
Likewise. Oh, I do have one. One of the pictures shows that there's no fence behind it. Like, you're gonna put a fence?
Yes, I took down that fence when they put that shed up. My plan is to put a new fence, and actually, the fence in my yard is not on my property line, it's on my property because of a tree that's basically in behind it, and I'm gonna take that tree down, so I put the fence on my property line.
Okay. Thank you. No question.
Thank you, you have a seat. Is there anyone like to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, close. No correspondence. Is there anyone opposed to run the side? First call, second call, third call, close.
On the...
On the favor.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, matter number Z-18-80, Michael Harris, for a variance, put up a shed and re-accept that on the premise of George Road Quincy, make a motion to grant the variance. If I got with the board, I'm sorry.
Three by three? Second. On the motion, standing on our favor.
Aye.
Close and move.
Good. Thank you very much.
Further under tonight's agenda. Z-1881, Matthew McGinn, Christine Callahan, for variance, to reconstruct an addition upon 367 Salamite. Garcia, they're representing a...
Name and address for the record.
Philip Baker, 86 Cedar Street, Frantry. I'm here on behalf of the owner, the design, designer of the addition. We're looking to apply for a variance to reconstruct a mudroom addition on the front of the house. The current mudroom addition is in disrepair, the footings are bad, starting to pull off the house, we wanna reconstruct it. Instead of having it stepped in, one foot on each side, we wanna flush it with the left and right on each side. It's a pre-existing non-conforming house and lot. We're smaller on the front edge, we're only just over 76 feet instead of the required 85. So with the front edge and the lot size, we're non-conforming by making the structure as is, so we're looking for a variance to widen the structure.
Are you building?
I'm not building, I'm just planning.
And what they're doing is they're really bringing that back about a foot or two, I mean, breaking the street, right? Because the windows are small, the way the windows go up?
Yes, there's an existing big window that pops out.
Yeah, so it's easy to come in and it's back.
It's a pre-existing non-conforming house and lot, we're smaller on the front edge, we're only just over 76 feet, instead of the required 85, so with the front edge and the lot size, we're non-conforming about making the structure as is, so we're looking for a variance to widen the structure.
Are you building?
I'm not building, I'm just planning.
And what they're doing is they're really bringing that back about a foot too many of the way through the street, right? Because the window's smaller, the way the windows walk?
Yes, there's an existing bay window that pops out.
Yeah, so it's even coming in the back a little bit. You got a mudroom there and a bathroom on the other side?
Yes, yeah, we're keeping the existing front edge, 18.4, we're not changing that, we're just changing the right-hand side from 12.4 to 11.
I have no questions.
Likewise.
You can have a seat. Is there anyone here that likes to speak? Oh, counsel.
Yeah, thank you.
Comments?
Comments. David Caffey, 48 Whitney Road, Wood One Counselor. No, I'm, I'm all in favor of the adjustments in our house, that front porch has had issues for a long time. I think it's great that both Matthew and Christine Callahan, young couple, wanna make repairs, they wanna stay in Quincy, and it's just gonna enhance, enhance their home, and they're gonna have space, I think, that was really unused space, they're gonna be able to utilize, you know, grow their family, so I'm in full support.
Thank you, counsel. Do you look around? You're the only counsel here tonight, again, my counsel, thank you.
Wood One, thank you.
Counselor Wood One's always here. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, close. No correspondence. Here's a letter here that Paul Keesh, 53 years, Mayor Rhodes, did favor. Is there anyone opposed to run the side? First call, second call, first call, close. No one had a question, so.
Ballot number Z-18-81, Matthew Began and Christina Callahan, for variance, for construction addition on the premises number 367, Southern Avenue, Quincy, take a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move. Thank you. Further on to tonight's agenda. Who's in the know? Come on up. Case number Z-18-82, Frank Kelly, for variance, there is a second level in the existing structure, premise number 17, Hawthorne. The applicant represented a year.
Good morning, Frank Kelly, 17 Hawthorne Street. Looking for a variance to go up. I have a single-story home right now. Kind of bedrooms, no closets.
The only one in the area.
Sorry?
The only one in the area.
It's been down for a while.
Can you keep it in the same...
Yes.
Any question in the afternoon? Then a couple bedrooms, one extra bed.
It is, it's two now, it is. You put in three? Originally, it was three bedrooms, I knew Tim wanted to check. We enlarged, took down a wall between two bedrooms, and we...
For those rented rooms?
Sorry?
Rented rooms, so if that's small, were they rented rooms?
So, originally, it was a three-bedroom, and now it's gonna be a three-bedroom. It's just that when I, when we refinanced a few years ago, the bank came in, saw that it was only two bedrooms, and now they doubt it's a two-bedroom, so. I'm not really increasing...
No, 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 you don't have a kitchen and living room upstairs, you're all set. That's why you have a three-bedroom. Yeah. I have no question.
I have no question. Bad, bad question.
You can have a seat. Anyone, anyone speak in favor? Counselor.
Thank you, David Caffey, for the Whitney Road, Wood One Counselor. No, I think it's great that the Kellys are enlarging the home. It's a bungalow, if anybody knows 17 Hawthorne, it's a nice dead-end street, it backs up to La Breck, and the amount of space that he has on both ends is tight, but the second floor is gonna really increase the enhancement of the home in, in the area, so it fits right in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did everyone look around? One more, counsel? Does anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, close. No correspondence. Anyone opposed to run the side? First call, second call, third call, close.
Just, just someone else here? Yes, Mr. Chairman, ballot number Z-18-82, Frank Kelly, for variance, a second level to existing structure, the premises on 78 Hawthorne, Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move. Thank you. So this last one?
I'm confused why they're not here, because they brought in their check to speak.
Tell them you need another one.
They put it up wrong and he came in and they said, "I'll see you Tuesday," maybe something happened.
All right, put him on for August 16.
My daughter's birthday, I won't be...
Mr. Chairman, ballot number Z-18-83, James Tapper, pleading for a variance, filing to renovate the kitchen, who an outside deck is seen in porch, under premise number 1.6 Brown Street, make a motion to continue the kitchen since February 12.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move.
Probably down at Inspection Services waiting for you, no?
I, I'm really baffled because I spoke to them.
They're rolling papers, they cover the check.
They could be downstairs.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
No favor?
May all meetings in 2019 go like that.